...was prompted by a business dispute. Parents of students at one low-performing school attempt to use California law to turn their campus into a charter school, but this three-year-old ruling has faced roadblocks in Southern California in the past. Gil Reyes reports from the West Adams District.
(Singing) Yes, they're great! Yes, they're great! Yes, they're great!
With banners in hand, these parents are demanding changes at 24th Street School south of downtown.
I shouldn't have to bus my kids out to the valley and find a school out there just to get a better education.
Parents want to turn their neighborhood campus into a charter school, hoping to improve the education of their kids, many of whom can't read at grade level. Helping them is 2010's Parent Trigger Law. It allows parents to take over failing schools if they gather enough signatures. They have. Sixty-eight percent of parents had signed the petition demanding change into a charter school. L.A.'s mayor also supports this.
Why? Because we empower parents on their rights, roles, and responsibilities. Why? Because we set high standards.
Twenty-fourth Street Elementary is just the third campus in the entire country to attempt to use the Parent Trigger Law. It's legal in several other states, but this is the first known case at the L.A. Unified School District. Two previous attempts to use Parent Trigger in California, at Compton and Adelanto school districts, have been blocked by legal challenges. An advantage for Twenty-fourth Street is support from the L.A. School Board, building expectations that other L.A. schools can apply Parent Trigger and succeed.
And there will be more. I understand the Teachers' Union has embraced this too, and that's a good thing. Because ultimately, we want to do this together. But if we have to, we will do this alone.
In this instance, the Teachers' Union, UTLA in particular, deserves real credit. We have not seen the level of harassment and intimidation that we've seen in previous efforts. We don't see them protesting this press conference today.
Changing into a charter school means many current teachers could be let go, but so far, no challenges from the Teachers' Union. Twenty-fourth Street could be operating as a charter as early as September. In the West Adams District, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. School Board voted unanimously to uphold the parents' request for charter school status. We reported last week on the city's first so-called parklet in Highland Park, and one week later, the first downtown parklets, two of them, have also been officially unveiled. As Cindy San Luis reports, these projects are meant to make Los Angeles more pedestrian-friendly and to help create a sense of community.
Three, two, one!
Downtown's first public parklets have sprung up on Sixth and Spring Streets in the historic core.
It builds community, and it makes streets safer, and it helps local businesses.
Parklets are temporary extensions of the sidewalk and provide seating and recreational space that is open to anyone who chooses to sit, relax, or socialize.
I think this is great, you know, I mean, I think a lot, you know, downtown L.A. has become more of a walking community, and it encourages people just to come out and be, be, be out and about.
The openings are part of a council District 14 Pilot Parklet Program through the L.A. Department of Transportation, also known as L.A. DOT. The first one opened earlier in the month in Highland Park, the last of the four in El Serino.
There must have been a foosball fan in the neighborhood to want to have a foosball table here.
I just threw it out there as an idea. They wanted to be an active parklet, so I was thinking, I like foosball, have a foosball, and it just stayed in the plans.
For the Spring Street Parklets, the Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council Complete Streets Working Group created concepts and designs with the support of Council District 14 and L.A. DOT. Parklets are often called outdoor living rooms or mini plazas, and have been fully embraced in other major cities like San Francisco and New York City. But this one here in downtown L.A. on Spring Street isn't just for lounging.
This is the first parklet in the nation that is an active recreation parklet, that invites people not only to sit and to have a good time, but also to exercise and to be healthy.
Parklets like this continue to revolutionize and revitalize downtown Los Angeles and the city of L.A., transforming a city that is known for its traffic into something more pedestrian-friendly. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. This Week.
From parks the size of a parking space to parks that are a little bit bigger, we go to South Los Angeles where one so-called pocket park is in the works. This one, the Wall Street Park, is part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, and as Anna Marcos shows us, it's bringing Mother Earth back where urban decay used to exist. Here's what a blighted house going down looks like.
Tear it down! Tear it down!
The foreclosed home had been a neighborhood eyesore. There were even bullet holes on the walls, but now the blight is about to go green. It's all part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, a plan to turn nuisance properties and empty urban lots into pocket parks in the city's most urban neighborhoods.
This house has been hurting the neighborhood for some time now. It's been empty, it's been broken down, it hasn't helped this neighborhood, it's making things worse, not better, and we're going to make things better, not worse.
Students from South Park Elementary who came to watch the demolition couldn't be happier.
I want to see the swings at, I like the swings.
I just play off of the equipment.
What can I say? I think it'd be nice for the kids, especially for the kids. They have somewhere to go.
So far, the city has opened seven new pocket parks under the 50 Parks Initiative, with an eighth one coming soon, and several more, like this future park, on the way.
We are designing this around the environment. We're designing it about energy conservation. We're designing it around groundwater retention. We're designing it using local plants. So when you come here, not only is it a park, it's really ecologically, it's part of your community.
A little concrete hacking, and this neighborhood eyesore is about to grow into something healthy for the community. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week. A museum here in the city receives a half a century-long lease agreement. Could there be another half-cent sales tax on the horizon? And a local community celebrates the renovation and reopening of a much-needed grocery store. These stories and more in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council has unanimously approved a long-term pact with the Chinese-American Museum, located at El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historic Monument. The agreement clears the way for the Chinese-American Museum to operate for the next 50 years at the city site. Councilman Jose Wezar, who represents the district that encompasses El Pueblo, called the Chinese-American Museum "an important part of El Pueblo's storied history." There are plans in the works to add 12,000 square feet of new space for exhibits and programs. Mayor Antonio Viegosa is endorsing a half-cent sales tax measure on the March ballot. Proposition A is expected to generate more than $200 million a year. A report by the city administrative officer who supports the measure predicted as many as 500 police officer jobs could be on the chopping block if Proposition A is defeated, and that the city's projected deficit of about $216 million could rise to $360 million. But opponents contend the tax would be bad for local businesses and hurt cash-strapped residents. More than $4 million in grant funding remains available for would-be homebuyers, thanks to a year-old program created as part of a settlement between the Justice Department and banks. So far, about 180 L.A. County applicants have each been awarded $30,000 grants for down payments. Superior Grocers, one of Southern California's largest independent supermarket chains, celebrated the re-grand opening of its newly renovated store in Council District Nine. In conjunction, there was also a special celebration to recognize the first community mural project completed in collaboration with Council District Nine, the accelerated school and mural artist Andre Meripolsky. The fruits and veggies mural was developed by the team to help promote health and wellness efforts and to beautify the surrounding community. The mural was completed with the help of our students from Wallace-Annenburg High School. The Superior Grocers store is located at 7316 South Compton Avenue. It's a farmer's market that caters to the professional crowd downtown, and after a temporary relocation, it's being returned to its former high-profile location. Many City Hall workers and others who work in the surrounding area frequent the City Hall Farmers Market, held every Thursday at lunchtime.
It's very convenient for the ones at lunchtime. It's only about a two-and-a-half-hour market during lunch, and it gets very, very busy.
The Farmers Market, originally located on the City Hall main lawn on First Street, was relocated to a less visible part outside of City Hall after the main lawn was taken over by Occupy L.A. protesters who set up encampments on the lawn. The city council recently approved extending the City Hall Farmers Market at least to the end of June.
Now that that lawn has been fully restored, beautifully restored, after the conclusion of the protests, the vote today will enable the Farmers Market to return to the City Hall lawn where it belongs.
But the vote comes with one caveat. Organizers will have to reimburse the city for cleaning services provided after each Farmers Market. That's a small price to pay for doing business. In fact, some say it's too small a price.
This is a business, Mr. President, and those vendors are making good money. I don't see why we can't charge a little extra, because in the end, it's usually the city that ends up on the short end of that stick, so I hope that we get a little more than just reimbursement for cleanup costs.
Despite the concern, the council took no time approving the extension of the popular Farmers Market.
It's really important that the city do everything that we can to encourage Farmers Markets throughout our city. These are wonderful sources of fresh produce for the residents of Los Angeles.
And those who work downtown say they're grateful for this unique lunchtime treat.
I work nearby, and for working people, having a market to go to during the week is special. Otherwise, you don't have access to something like this during the work week and can only shop on the weekends.
Again, the City Hall Farmers Market is held at lunchtime on Thursdays. A new restaurant in Lake Valboa in the San Fernando Valley is also offering up some healthy fare while also being environmentally friendly. As Gil Reyes reports, the Humblebee Bakery is cooking up ways to be green and to reinvest in the local economy.
Less than a year after its grand opening, Humblebee Bakery and Cafe has received mostly rave reviews on social networking sites like Yelp. Customers say...
It's amazing, and fresh, and organic, and so inventive.
I like that we're supporting our community.
We just love coming here every weekend.
Whether you ordered the Eggs Benedict or the Garden Omelet, co-owner Jim Benano says all his produce is bought farm-fresh locally, in places like the Encino Farmers Market. This helps to ensure most of his money is reinvested in our region. He also takes pride in being environmentally conscious.
All of our plastic packaging is corn-based, so that's all biodegradable. All of our paper packaging is also compostable, biodegradable, so pretty much everything we're using here, we're about ninety, ninety percent organic right now.
To further help the environment and reduce energy costs, this family-owned business uses compact fluorescent lights throughout the restaurant. Also...
All of our dishes are hand-washed in tub sinks, so we're not constantly washing, running a dishwasher all day.
All that has earned them an award certificate from the city of Los Angeles. To have, have new restaurants open, particularly in this environment, in this economic climate, we encourage people to come by, and we want to make sure they stay in business, not just because they're a great local restaurant, but they have great pastries and fresh breads. The Humblebee Bakery and Cafe is located at 17321 Satacoy Street. It's open Wednesday through Sunday for breakfast and lunch. In Lake Valboa, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The restaurant also benefits from the business tax holiday, which waives the gross receipts tax for new businesses during their first three years. In this week's list of things to do, a stroll in the mountains, stepping at the Music Center, and activities for the whole family on the last weekend of the month. Take a free bus trip to the mountains on Saturday, February 23rd, for a visit to Solstice Canyon in Malibu. Walk next to a babbling brook, wander under towering alders and sycamore trees, and explore the park's many trails. A haven from city life, Solstice Canyon is the perfect spot to enjoy the beauty and serenity of nature. Meet at the Vista Hermosa Natural Park Office, located at 100 North Toluca Street downtown. The event is sponsored by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and presented by the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Call 213-250-1100 for more information. It's a little like tap dancing, but then, it's also nothing like it. If you've never experienced stepping, it's best described as a percussive dance that uses kicks, stomps, claps, and chants to create visually and musically exciting rhythms. And you have a chance to enjoy stepping on the Music Center stage on Saturday, February 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., when the world's first professional dance company devoted to stepping, Step Africa, puts on a show that draws from roots in African dance and military marching. The Music Center is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. For more info, go to musiccenter.org. And if ever you're wondering what to do with the kids on a Saturday or Sunday, just remember, if it's the last weekend of the month, you can always bring the family to Skirball Cultural Center's last weekends of the month events. For the month of February, the last weekend of the month falls on Saturday and Sunday, the 23rd and 24th. In celebration of President's Day, February's last weekend will feature a presidential art project at Skirball's Family Art Studio, and a chance to visit with our first president, George Washington, who will regale families with tales from his days as cherry-tree chopper in chief. The events are included with museum admission. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Love was definitely in the air at L.A. Animal Shelters this past Valentine's Day. A special adoption event in honor of love brought animal lovers and cuddly creatures together. Here's Anna Marcos with more on My Furry Valentine. You're watching someone falling in love. Make that two people falling in love with a furry friend. That was the idea, as animal shelters all over L.A. launched My Furry Valentine, a pet adoption drive aimed at encouraging some canine-human love connections for Valentine's Day. This lady caught the love bug.
She thinks they're going to be Twiggy or Molly. I'm not sure yet. She's a sweetheart.
And there were sweethearts everywhere, looking for someone to love. The My Furry Valentine Drive offered big discounts to new pet owners and lovers, whether the sweetheart they took home was canine, feline, or something else.
Here at the shelter, they, they neuter him, they put a microchip on it. I just had to pay for a few vaccinations. I didn't have to do anything but just to give him love and give him food. That's it, and check him for lumps.
Love definitely in the air at this pet matchmaking extravaganza, but shelter workers remind L.A. residents that every day is a day to adopt one of these little guys and make a love connection. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week. For more information on pet adoptions, visit laanimalservices.com. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Today's lesson, how to exercise with your kids and save the planet. First, you must believe, be that your children really are the future. Second, you must do. Instead of jumping in the car, let's go for a walk, or a run, or even a bike ride. No pollution, no oil, no gas, and as long as we obey all traffic safety rules, we're cool. Lastly, you have to live. Live into our big, beautiful, healthy future. Be, do, live. Watch the road.
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Okay, Mr., I mean Sergeant, if you would please call up to the Public Safety Committee and tell them we need those members down here. Mr. Corentz is here. Members, I still need, I mean Sergeant, I need a few more members so we can get this thing started. Pastor Joe Gates is in the house. And we had a vice chair, whoever's chairing Public Safety, tell them to end the committee and come down immediately. Mr. Buscaino from the 15th District is here, put him on the queue. Joe Buscaino is here. Okay, I'm going to call on at this point, Mr. Labange and Mr. Bernard Parks has just entered the council chambers. And like I said, we are gonna have qualms problems today. Mr. Labange.
All right, Red Scat fans?
As of yet, but we will begin our program. Again, it's Friday, February 22, 2013. I'm looking for Mr. Reyes. Again, I want to welcome all of you here. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m.
I'd like to welcome our Council President, Councilman Herb Wesson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes and members. Today, I have two presentations. The first one is Get Closer, Dear. This is Pet Adoption Friday. We have done this program for almost seven years, and we have a 100% adoption rate of our dogs. Most of the dogs that get adopted here are adopted by people that are either in the chambers, or they get adopted by staff that are watching this on television or listening to this on television. What? Who whispered? No, we all, you know, you would give us a chance to break a record here. Your husband will be delighted to get this dog. I think we've just broken a record, but let me tell you about this beautiful fellow that I have. He's four, what did you say, four or five? He's a poodle-cocker mix. His name is Cody. He's been neutered, microchipped. He's ready to go. He's potty-trained. Oh, wait, potty-trained, no, housebroken. He's housebroken. You can tell just how caring our volunteers are because she said he was potty-trained. I'm gonna have to take my youngest granddaughter and let you train her. She needs some help. Anyway, these animals are companion animals, and they will give you unconditional love. If there's somebody out in the audience and you're, don't be disappointed that Cody, it appears that Cody's going to be adopted, because we have shelters throughout the city, and there are dogs just like Cody and cats and a variety of other animals that you could adopt. So with that said, I'm going to go into my main presentation, and Cody, I kept a promise, I made you, I got you a home. Alrighty, so let's, hey, let's give City Hall a round of applause, because we, our 100% adoption rate lives on.
This very special employee was in the Rose Parade representing all of us and got as many cheers as anyone going down Colorado Boulevard. Give her a big hand!
Yeah, she's a loving and caring person. Members, I'm going to ask a young leader to join me at the podium. An individual that I'm very proud to call my friend, an individual that as of Monday, I can now call Mr. President. So, join me in welcoming to the podium Pastor President Xavier Thompson. Please. And maybe if I could, if we could get some of your top-level guys, like Pastor Gaddis, my dear friend Pastor Gates, to come up, or, in fact, all of you, if you would come and stand around. And we've got a, is that your grandchild, Pastor Gates?
Yes, sir.
All right. President Thompson has been elected President of the Baptist Ministers Conference, which is a highly, yeah, give him the, a very highly respected organization that is one of the most influential religious organizations in the city of Los Angeles. Whenever candidates are running for office, be it city, county, state, they've even received visits from potential presidential candidates, because they respect and recognize the power that the gentleman behind me possess. Now Pastor, I'm proud of the church that he pastors, Southern Missionary Baptist Church, because it's only had three pastors in its existence, and two of them are with me today. President Thompson, just elected. President Gates is a former president of the Baptist Ministers Fellowship.
That's right.
So this one church, mid-sized church in the district, has produced two presidents and two leaders. The man that I honor today was 16 when he became a pastor or minister. He's worked hard to understand the Bible and its teachings. He is a rising star in the city of Los Angeles and the youngest president of the Baptist Ministers Conference. I expect even bigger and better things because of this young man, and I'm so proud that you are my friend, and I'm so proud that your church is in the heart of the district that I represent. In fact, my first task, when Councilman Nate Holden hired me, was to somehow, some way, put a traffic signal in front of that light, and I'm proud to say that I was successful in that endeavor. Ladies and gentlemen, let me present to you the new president of the Baptist Ministers Conference, Pastor Xavier Thompson. Give it up for him!
Thank you so much, President Herb Wesson, and to our Presiding and to the City Council at large. It's a wonderful privilege to be here, standing before you today. I'm happy, I'm humbled, I'm honored to be here. Certainly, I see very familiar faces such as Councilman Bernard Parks, who's just a rock star in our community, and Councilwoman Jan Perry, who is our own celebrity. We thank God for her. And to Councilman Alacorn, in his absence, thank God for the partnership that we have with him, so many of you, Councilman Zine, Councilman Garcetti, and those who we do not know as of yet, but looking forward to forging a wonderful partnership between our civic leaders and our church leaders. No man is an island unto himself. I stand today on the shoulders of great men. Particularly, I want to thank you for welcoming these men who stand behind me, and I would that our guests and our council give these men a round of applause. Particularly, my father in the faith, whom I've had the wonderful privilege of succeeding at the Southern Church, Dr. Joe Gates. We have one of our former National Missionary Baptist Convention Presidents. One of our national leaders are with us today, Dr. Willie T. Sneed, Sr., one of our past presidents of the Progressive Baptist State Convention, Dr. Prentice Lewis, and certainly several of our vice presidents are with us today, Vice President Dr. George Hurt of the Mount Sinai Church in Los Angeles, and Dr. J. Wendell Davis of the Jericho Church here in the city. And all of these other men who stand shoulder to shoulder with us today. We look forward, President Wesson, to working with you and the council at large, to better our community, to look after the homeless, to do what we can do, to hold your hands up as you hold our hands up. Leadership is partnership, and we look forward to the bright future that is ahead of us. Thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you so much. We do have some speakers on the queue. Councilman Perry?
Reverend, or Mr. President, it was a joy to behold you and to see all of the people who were there to celebrate this transition. You not only have a lot of wisdom standing around you, beside you, behind you, upon which you will rely, and they will strengthen you, but you have a lot of wisdom sitting beside you. And these women are the wind beneath your wings. And of course, it should be noted that none of them would be here without us. So, did you like that? Okay, good. So, I, as a relevant man and a seasoned individual and an inclusive individual, I look forward to working with you, and I know you've forgiven me for parking on the sidewalk, and, but I was just so excited that I wanted to get in there and see you get installed. It's a new day, but it's a day based on wisdom and history and respect, respect for your elders, respect for transitions, and to build on and move forward. And I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Zine, followed by Councilman Buscaino.
I'll tell you, Pastor, the day that my colleague Jan Perry's happy, we're all happy. Because if she's not happy, then she beats me up every day. I was at, I don't know what we would call it, but it was an awakening. When we talk about the House of God and the pastors that were there, and the folks that were there, and the music that was there, and the celebration that was there, it was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. I was just honored to be there as a part of that, to see that, to see what I consider living history. You're a young man, believes in God, has a following, the folks that go to church on Sunday, and I will say I've been to many churches, and when I go to churches in South Los Angeles, the people that show respect for God, the people that show up in suits and ties, and the ladies, how they're dressed, it's respectful. You don't see that all over the city. You don't see that in some of the churches, but you do in South Los Angeles, you do at the Baptist Church, you do, because people respect God. And you are leading people, you're leading the folks that believe in the American dream, the opportunity, and opportunity obviously has blessed you, as you're going to lead the congregations, the Baptist folks of this community. But I was amazed to see how many there were in that room, in that church. I know that there's a lot of churches around, but you gathered them all together, and that line kept on going. And I think you had your daughter with you. Was that your daughter that you're carrying when you walked in? Just a sweet, sweet little girl. But to see and to live that experience, to me, was a blessing, and I just wanted to commend you, my colleague President Herb Wesson, the first African-American to be the council president in the history of Los Angeles, and I know it's Black History Month here that we celebrate, but it's all bringing people together, and that's what you're doing, is bringing people together. People who believe that this American dream can be blessed by all of us. So I want to congratulate you, the pastors with you. You work as a team, you work as a team to make this a better place, a better city, and our leader here in City Council, President Herb Wesson, a good friend, making this a better place for all. So God bless you all. The mission that you're carrying on is an important mission, and hopefully we have more people to believe in it and be a happier, safer place. We are the city of the angels, so we all have to be angels among the city of the angels. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any opportunity that I can to praise and thank a man of God and a man of faith, I take every opportunity. So, Mr. President, congratulations. I am Mr. Wesson, thank you for bringing these men of God before us here in City Council. I want to say this, it really takes a partnership with the faith-based organizations across our city to move the city along and improve our quality of life, and I so look forward to our partnership with you as a leader, and, you know, whether, and just to echo what Mr. Zine said, for me, in Watts, I love my churches in Watts, whether it's at Bethel or Macedonia. Leaving prayer and leaving worship, I just feel renewed because of the love and the excitement and the prayer and to be a part of that. And I want to thank you for taking this position, and we bless you, and we look forward to your partnership. We're gonna do great things together. God bless you.
Councilman Parks, then Councilman Labange.
Thank you very much. Pastor, it's great seeing you install, and I also want to say, one of my pastors, Pastor Gaddis, just got his installation, and so certainly pleased to be at your church, but remember, guests have to bring a check.
We can collect today, Councilmen.
But I just realized, it makes you feel a little older. You were born after I had 13 to 14 years of city service, so that makes me really concerned about, you know, age difference and all that other, but it is important to see the Baptist Ministers moving forward, and I think Pastor Davis basically took it forward last year, last couple of years, and certainly gave you a strong foundation and background to continue, because you are certainly, as an organization and individually, the backbone of our community. As I go to two to three churches every Sunday, and to sit there and not only go through the process of worshiping at the church, but have a chance to talk to the congregation, it's a rewarding sense in our community of how collective strength it is and how much it is important for people to see elected officials come in their service, not just to say vote for something, not just to come in in election season, but actually worship in the service. And so you provide that platform for us. You are, churches in our community are neighborhood churches, people walk to those churches, and Baptist Ministers also have had the ability to break down that barrier between mega churches and little churches. They're all important, whether there's 15 people in the church or six, every one of those churches are a foundation in our community, and we appreciate you keeping that long legacy, and we look forward to great things from you and this organization in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl.
I want you, of course, my Venetian called me right afterwards, and I'm delighted that you bring in new energy and new leadership, and come to Venice and Oakwood and see some of the issues we're dealing with there. God bless you and all of your leadership going forward. Thank you very much.
Yes, and Mr. Wesson, Mr. President, welcome.
This great country has a great value, separation of church and state. But the greater value is there's no separation between church and community, temple and community, mosque and community. It is the community, as Mr. Parks just spoke about. Wherever we are, when we get together and gather as people, we're stronger people. So I'm honored to rise to tell everybody how special it is that you're here today. And I like what you said about partnership is leadership, because that's how we're going to get out of the darkness as we go through. And I want to ask Mr. Zine, because I can, because we're right there. Mr. Zine, when's the last time you've been to confession, Mr. Zine? I just had to throw that out, being a Catholic boy.
Not in a confession. I have no sense to confess.
I got them up. I got them up.
Okay. That concludes the speaker queue. Council, President Wesson.
Okay, now it is my pleasure to present to you your first certificate that I believe is signed by all members celebrating your new presidency, Xavier Thompson, Mr. President.
Mr. President, all right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations. Okay, colleagues, we do have a very limited number of Councilmembers in the horseshoes, so we have to move through our agenda. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Garcetti, Weezer, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson. All eleven members present in accord, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Zine moves. Councilmember Corcoran seconds. Next item?
Committee to resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Caress moves, and Councilmember Perry seconds. Next item?
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing.
Members, I'd like to direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. There are cards on this item.
Yes, there are cards on my item. We will call that special. Next item?
Items two and three are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, and seeing no cards on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. Those ordinances will be held over for one week for a second reading.
Thank you. Next item?
Items four through 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, we do have items with cards on four, five, seven, and eight. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I believe Councilmember Labange wanted to call item six special.
Six special? Any other items special, colleagues? Items four through 10? That leaves out the items nine and 10, I believe. So let's open the roll, and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. On the continuation agenda, item 11 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Those items are before us.
There are cards on these items.
Okay, we do have cards on 10 and 11, I believe. On 11.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special, or if you wish, to begin the special meeting.
Okay, well, let's do the presentation. Okay, do we have, our next presentation, I believe, is District Five?
Well, good morning, everyone. This morning, I'm delighted to tell you about some tremendous local heroes. For the past seven years, the Jewish Journal has published an annual mensch list. This past January, they released the Mensch List 2012. Dictionary definitions say a mensch is a person of integrity and honor, possessing admirable characteristics such as fortitude and firmness of purpose. A mensch radiates a fundamental decency, and is outstanding and worthy. The Jewish Journal began its mensch list in 2006. The idea originated with Rob Eschman, the Jewish Journal's editor-in-chief, as a way of making an alternative year-end list, one that is specifically aimed at recognizing under-the-radar people who do good through amazing acts of kindness, and they are almost all previously unrecognized by the larger community, and they all go way beyond the usual level of volunteering. Leo Rosten, the beloved author of The Joys of Yiddish, said that a mensch is someone to admire and emulate, somewhat of noble character. So first, I want to thank the Jewish Journal, because by calling attention to such exemplary people and their fine deeds, the Jewish Journal showcases persons that we all may justly hope to emulate. Here with us, representing the Jewish Journal and its parent company, Tribe Media Corporation, our publisher and editor, Rob Eschman, executive editor, Susan Freudenheim, and I apologize if I mangle anybody's names as we go through this, associate editor, Ryan Smith, and photographer, Dan Kozinski. I'd also like to acknowledge the president, David Suisse, and writer and editor Julie Greenbaum Faks, both of whom couldn't be here today. Before I introduce the mensches who are here with us today, I'd like to invite Rob Eschman to share some thoughts. Rob?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council. And thank you, Councilwoman Corretz, for having us here. You know, a lot of magazines, People Magazine does The Sexiest Person in America, and Entertainment Weekly does The Most Powerful People in Hollywood. So, and L.A. Magazine does The Best Places to Get Pastries or Bagels or Massages in L.A. And we do the mensches, and that's a purposeful choice. And the reason is, we deeply believe at the Jewish Journal that the purpose of us, of our role in L.A., the purpose of our existence here is to be here for each other. And the people we select every year really exemplify the idea that we as Jews, and we as citizens of the world, and we as citizens of L.A., our purpose here, our goal, is really to be here for each other. The people we select every year exemplify that. We're very proud to bring them to the attention of the city and our community. I just want to take a moment to thank our staff, Susan Freudenheim, our executive editor, David Suisse, our president, and the incredible staff that puts this together every year. Believe it or not, out of all the Jews in L.A., it's not that easy to find 10 mensches every year, because we usually find 50, and we have to weed it down. But I just want to say, we're very proud of these mensches. We're very proud of being able to bring them to the attention of the city, and we're honored that you have honored us with this today. Thank you.
Congratulations. Councilmember Caress?
And now I'd like to introduce some of the Jewish Journal's mensches and ask them if they wish to say a few words. First, Paulinda Schimmel Babini is the founder and president of the Ovarian Cancer Circle, a foundation she started in 2010 in memory of her daughter, Robin, who in 2006 lost her life after a heroic battle with the disease. She had been diagnosed two years earlier at the young age of 16. The circle, which includes 12 members, all mensches, has raised much awareness and more than $35,000 to fight ovarian cancer and to spare others in the process. Paulinda?
Councilwoman Corretz, before she speaks, I'd like to address Councilmember Rosendahl on request. Councilmember Rosendahl?
First, I have to say right out the gate that Rob and I have worked together for almost 25, 30 years. And every time I did a show on the Mideast, to put it in the proper perspective, he would either be on it, or he would help advise me on it. You're a real mensch for what you've done with the Journal over the years. Give him a round of applause. Come on. Now, Paul Caress and I are like brothers. We go way back in our politics, and we support each other in everything that we do. But the Jewish Journal has been an expression of integrity, honesty, and hope, all in one, all the time. And the mensches are mensches, people who have made a difference with their lives. Look, I was told I had terminal cancer. I would be dead before the November election. And all kinds of people came over to the house, you know, and my rabbi is Leonard Bierman. And we kneel and we pray, and every time I finished my God Squad show, he would lead us all in prayer, because ecumenicalism is the key to success for all of us. And we're all mensches if we believe in a higher spirit and work with each other on it. I see the young gentleman there. Could they just stand up so we get him in the camera right now? Come on. There's your future. Give them a round of applause. It's so beautiful to see them. Well, God bless you all. Yahweh.
Councilmember Perry?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say a few quick words of gratitude towards the diversity of your coverage, the depth and breadth, not only on local issues, but on personal human interest stories, and on global issues to pull us closer together and to make us far more understanding than we would be without you. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corretz.
And now I'd like to ask Paulinda Babini if she'd like to briefly say something to us?
Thank you so much, Jewish Journal, for nominating me for one of the mensches of the year, and Councilwoman Cortez for being here today. This is the face of ovarian cancer. I am Paulinda Babini, president and founder of the Ovarian Cancer Circle, and as was already stated, to honor the memory of my daughter, Robin, who was diagnosed at 17 with ovarian cancer and lost her life at 20. We didn't know the symptoms of ovarian cancer, and the doctors did not take it seriously. And until she was diagnosed, she had stage-three ovarian cancer. So it's the circle's mission to educate and bring awareness to the community. I give out these bookmarks with the symptoms on it when we do health fairs to educate the community. So thank you very much. And my mission for the rest of my life is to bring awareness to ovarian cancer.
Georgia Friedman Harvey curates art exhibitions that promote healing. For example, working with hospitalized teens to create art and poetry so that their spirits might be uplifted. 10 years ago, she was a bone marrow donor for a stranger. Georgia and her husband Gary, who is also here today, led a fight for their son Ezra and other children with disabilities to be fully included in their school district. She founded One in a Million Kids, a support group for families with children with rare diseases. Next, she created Come Walk in My Shoes, a one-day interactive fair for schoolchildren, parents, and teachers to learn about disabilities. After that, it was Casey's Closet, which fills cabinets in hospitals with wonderful things for young patients. And she's involved in numerous other great endeavors. Georgia?
I'd like to thank the Jewish Journal and the city of Los Angeles for honoring me. I truly feel like a mensch, so I'm much more comfortable being behind the cameras. But I think that with all you said, I would just like to say, and I will probably embarrass my son, but as of yesterday, he got his first acceptance to transfer to a four-year university, which is a milestone for a child living their entire life with a rare disorder. And so it's because of him and just the ability to make a difference that I'm here today. So thank you again.
Thank you, Georgia. And next, we come to Sarah Lowe, who created the Lowe Vision Rehabilitation Institute to improve the lives of people with permanent vision loss. With the help of her parents, including her father, David, who is here today, and that of a devoted eye surgeon, Dr. Glenville March, she founded this wonderful nonprofit organization, which has helped many patients since opening its doors this past year. Never turning anyone away, they have provided specialized examinations in tremendous therapy, counseling, and care. Sarah, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for having me, and thanks to the Jewish Journal for this wonderful honor. 10 years ago, this week actually, I permanently lost vision in my left eye, and I had nowhere to go. So my parents, along with a wonderful board, we formed the Lowe Vision Rehabilitation Institute. And we basically improved the quality of life to visually impaired patients. And all I have to say is, we've changed many lives, and I'm very happy to have a place where people can go that I didn't have. So thank you so much for having me, and thanks again to the council and to Jewish Journal.
Thank you, Sarah. And I mean... Next, I am perhaps especially pleased to introduce Ashton Rosen, UCLA junior, because of course, that's my alma mater, the best school in Los Angeles, and also where my daughter is attending. Ashton is here with her friend Serena, who is the director of UCLA Hill El's Bearing Witness Program, a two-month weekly workshop pairing students with Holocaust survivors for intimate discussion and reflection. Ashton found a friend and survivor, Eva Brettler, but also took the program to a broader UCLA audience, including by inaugurating UCLA's first-ever Yoem HaShoah Week with a series of events addressing the Holocaust. She organized a film screening, panel discussion, and mid-campus Holocaust vigil, and personally reached out to disability advocacy groups, the LGBT community, and other organizations for whom the notion of struggle and suffering would resonate. Ashton?
I just want to say a big thank you to the Jewish Journal and to the city of Los Angeles for honoring us. And I'm really grateful to be standing amongst this group of people. These are really incredible people. I've been overwhelmed to see the amount of interest and awareness in Holocaust amongst students at UCLA. So as a student, it's really great to be here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ashton. And Joel Lipton is a great photographer, but also a terrific human being, who often donates his time, services, and skills as a photojournalist to help a good cause. That's profoundly evident in the Big Sunday events, where Joel takes portraits of people, which he gives them on the spot. Those photos illuminate the humanity that is truly special about each person. Throughout the year, Joel, who is with us today with his wife Sharon, helps out that way for various organizations and causes. Joel?
I'd like to thank the Jewish Journal and Councilman Corretz and the City Council for honoring us today. Very thrilled to be here, and I am more comfortable behind the camera, but very happy to receive this honor today and be here with all the other mensches. Thank you very much.
Dr. Matthew Lefferman and Eric Weisman are two members of the Modern Orthodox Congregation, Bene David Judea and Pico Robertson, which I've been attending off and on for almost 50 years since it was established. They've worked tirelessly to ensure the presence of Sunday sports games locally. They're coaches with the American Youth Soccer Organization, and they have helped create, structure, and run a Little League soccer division, and sits on their board. They also formed the nonprofit Maccabee Athletic Club a year ago, giving Jewish youths more opportunity to play soccer, basketball, and flag football. Through these and other efforts, they give young people in the city more opportunities to play and benefit from team sports. Matthew, Eric?
Thank you, Councilwoman Corretz and the rest of the City Council. It's quite an honor to be standing here before you. Our activities on behalf of the Maccabee Athletic Club and the Jewish youth of the West Side attract approximately 300 kids from over 10 different schools. The significance is that these are kids who want to observe their Judaism and attend synagogue on Saturdays and cannot participate in regular citywide recreational activities. So we give them an opportunity to be active on Sundays. While I am a physician professionally, and I realize that our work pales in comparison to those who are helping with ovarian cancer and blindness and autism, as are some of the other honorees, but we like to think that in some small measure, we're helping to prepare the future professionals in our city to cure some of those diseases. And I would encourage the council members to support, both financially and in other ways, any activities that can get the youth in our city active and just keeping them active. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
What an amazing group of people. Let's give them all a big hand.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers.
And lastly, I wanted to acknowledge the menschers who weren't able to make it today. Just briefly, Connie Laypen and Harvey Laypen are parent activists regarding autism, and they've been remarkable, remarkably productive in many efforts. They're represented here today by a friend, Judy Mark. Frank Nikbakt is an unflinching voice for Jews in Iran and spends up to 20 hours each week as the volunteer head of the Committee for Minority Rights in Iran, which raises awareness about the ongoing discrimination and persecution faced by various religious minorities there. Orna Elian, and I apologize if I mangled that one, works tirelessly as the unpaid CEO of the Mati Israeli Community Center, which helps Israelis in Southern California stay connected to their faith, roots, tradition, culture, and language while promoting a spirit of community. And lastly, Al Ashley has devoted thousands of hours to volunteer effort over 30 years, working with builders of Jewish education. And by sharing his formidable fiscal expertise, Al has had a profound and lasting impact on Jewish schools and education throughout Los Angeles and beyond. So many menschers, and we have certificates for all of them, but I'd like to close by giving this plaque to the Jewish Journal. And Rob, Susan, Ryan, and Dan, if you'd like to join me. The plaque reads, "The City of Los Angeles gratefully salutes the Jewish Journal for its extraordinary leadership, reportage, and service." The city furthermore applauds the Jewish Journal's annual mensch list, celebrating amazing civic heroes who through compassionate accomplishments have changed the world for the better. The Jewish Journal delightfully commemorates the mitzvot of its honorees, thereby inspiring a profound generosity of spirit among all people. Through such steadfast ways and caring deeds, the Jewish Journal has made Los Angeles a better place in which to live. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers. It's wonderful to have such great heroes in our community. Thank you so much. We do have for a quick introduction. Counselor Perry, I believe you have a group of folks that you'd like to introduce.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask all of the young people from Kol Yehudah Youth Program, stand up with their Rabbi Mendel Duckman. Please stand up and give them a hand.
A big round of applause, folks, for our young visitors.
Kol Yehudah is an organization that started 10 years ago in Los Angeles, and it is geared towards young people, building them into future leaders of society and empowering them to take a more active role in their communities. For the past 10 years, this organization has grown from a few boys in a backyard to over 100 boys and girls. Rabbi Duckman provides the boys and girls with guidance on how to run their own organizations in the future. The children are given a chance to role-play in real-life situations of running an organization as they learn hands-on leadership, skill management, proper work ethic, and what to do if something doesn't go as planned. Each young person is selected to stand up before their fellow members and give a public speech and are encouraged to help other young people with special needs. Now, this year's elected executive board is Ephraim Levenberg, President, Mr. President, Levi Weiss, Vice President, and Mendel Lermon, Secretary of State. They are visiting the council chamber today to receive certificates and learn about their city government. And I'm just going to let Mr. President say a very few words into the microphone here.
Thank you. My name is Ephraim Levenberg, an highest service president of Kol Yehudah, which is the Junior Congregation of Los Angeles. Firstly, I would like to thank the Council for hosting our K O Y inauguration. They are models of leadership in the Los Angeles community and is an honor for us to be here today. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Rabbi Mendel Duckman for starting Kol Yehudah, our youth synagogue and organization. Rabbi Duckman provides great opportunities for exciting and meaningful adventures. For instance, he organized a trip for all of us to go to Mexico for the weekend and even took us to New York. Rabbi Duckman is also involved in helping a larger Jewish community. We are very grateful for his presence in Los Angeles. Kol Yehudah is a youth synagogue run for the kids, by the kids. This means that the kids help run the synagogue. The ultimate goal is that as we grow up, we will learn those skills so that one day we can lead a synagogue of our own. Additionally, K O Y provides the opportunity to learn valuable leadership skills that its participants can use in all aspects of their life. I don't need a lecture about the value of leadership because surely you understand it. But speaking personally, the privilege of leadership has been a great and meaningful experience. In closing, I would like to mention that this Sunday is the Festival of Purim, an occasion celebrating the victory of the Jewish people against steep odds. Mordechai and Esther's leadership abilities gave the Jewish people the strength to survive. It is my hope and prayer that we can use all of these great opportunities to strengthen ourselves and make the world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Madam Clerk, let's get back to the agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
Item six called special by Counselor LaBonde.
Okay, we have two cards on item six. Let's have John Walsh, actually, one card.
Could you hold this on the desk for a minute? We're getting information.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Our next item. That's one minute for public comments on each item, one minute for public comment. So let's move to the next one.
Item eleven called special for cards, and I believe Counselor Buscagino has an amendment.
We do have two cards on that item.
We'll take the cards first.
Okay. So Mr. John Walsh, one minute, and Dr. Tom Williams, one minute. Come on up. And also Juan San Juan as well. So John Walsh, Dr. Tom Williams, and Juan San Juan, one minute, please.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or just put in the front page online, Google the front page online, John Walsh, with all the blogs. This concerns the Buscagino and Englander regarding the operation of a truck and container storage facility. You know, the amount of industrialization down there is incredible. You know, in a sense, I'm very selfish. If the people down in Watson, down in the South area, want to die earlier from the pollution that this creates, fine. But some of it, of course, the winds blow south, but I think you up there, down there, better realize how terrible the pollution is. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Dr. Tom Williams, are you in the chamber? Dr. Tom Williams, final call. Okay, Juan San Juan.
Yeah, that sounded a little bit racist, but that's the way we run society anyway. So the guy's, you know, he's got it. Anyway, do whatever you gotta do, okay? But do it. Don't just talk about it, do it.
Thank you. Counselor LaBonde, are we ready with item number six? Oh, Dr. Tom Williams is here. Great. Come on up.
One minute. Dr. Tom Williams, one minute. Okay, new regime. One minute. Why one minute? Two minutes is quite good. We're quite concerned in El Sereno, sorry, Dr. Tom Williams, El Sereno. I'm quite concerned regarding the Public Works project for Soto Street Bridge. It's at the confluence of Huntington Drive, Mission, and Soto. We're having problems. We can't get enough information regarding this.
Sir, can you please stay focused on the agenda before you?
Oh, sorry, eleven. Okay. One minute. Okay, trucks are a thing of the past. We need to get the freight on the rail. I visited Wilmington the other day, and they are tired of being the dumping ground for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's take care of that item. Assistant Speaker on the queue, Counselor Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. As I indicated, colleagues, on Tuesday, the community of Wilmington is just located north of Port of Los Angeles. And for years, residents have endured the negative impacts of heavy industrial operations in and around the Port of Los Angeles. And what you have before you is a technical amendment. And if I can get a second. Wow, thank you. That was quick. Fantastic. Wilmington, thanks you as well. I move that the motion be amended to assert jurisdiction over the determination letter of the Harbor Area Planning Commission issued on February 19, 2013. And we are waiting on this, to move forward on this technical amendment. So I asked to move forward, and I asked for your aye vote. Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, Assistant Speaker on the queue. Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's adopted as amended.
Thank you. Counselor LaBonde, are you ready on number six?
Yes. Item number six, just to let you know, Zaki Mustafa is here. This, just wanted to ask on this particular issue here, we're going to have a prototype, just a friendly amendment, that there'll be a prototype developed by all parties involved for this before it would be approved to be installed. Mr. Mustafa, that's all right? That's the right words?
Yes.
So we're going to do a prototype and get federal guidelines, because this is a traffic intersection. Mr. Rosendahl, you're head of transportation. Instead of walk and don't walk, we use the Apple Man, which is the one that you know in West Berlin, East Berlin, that has the man saying halt or the man walking with his hat on. And this would be at Billy Wilder Square at Sunset and La Brea. Thank you.
Okay, we need to move, Counselor Rosendahl, we might lose a call. Counselor Rosendahl.
I just want to say, as the chair of the committee, this obviously is in my committee, and it's a great move, and I support it 100%. Thank you, Mr. LaBonde.
We do have one speaker on this, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, for identifications purposes only, chairman of the Anybody But Garcetti for Mayor. Of course, he's not here. He's hardly ever here. Perry and Garcetti are running for office.
Please, and stay focused on the agenda.
The Billy Wilder Square, yes, that'll be quite near the building in Sunset Boulevard, where Joe Gillis was, the writer, was writing. These square names are a problem. How do you get a square name? And I want to say to everybody in East LA and in South LA that the squares always end up, these honoring squares in our white neighborhoods, okay? And remember, when it comes to racism, nobody knows racism better than a white man because we invented it. And I'm telling you right now, these honorary squares, you find very few of them. Every honorary white square you find in Hollywood, you find one-tenth in the city of Watson.
Thank you. Okay, seeing who else on the queue. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Counselor Carruthers for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce someone who wasn't a colleague of mine, because we weren't there exactly at the same time, but someone who I've much admired and who is an exceptional Assembly member from the City of Sacramento, Roger Dickinson. Mr. President, can I ask him to say a couple of words of greeting?
Please, yes. Welcome to City Hall chambers.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Council. And thank you, Councilmember Carruthers, for the introduction. It's a pleasure to join you in these historic chambers. It's my privilege to represent the historic state capital of the state of California. But let me just say, I bring to the legislature an acute appreciation for the role of local government, having served almost 17 years as a Sacramento County supervisor. And indeed, Los Angeles is no stranger to me either, because my law degree comes from the law school at UCLA. So I am happy to be here, and I know we will keep in mind the needs and requirements of local government as we go through this legislative session, as always. Thank you again.
Thank you. We can start the eight clap together, not just kidding.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Carruthers. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item one called special for cards.
We have several cards on this item. We have one minute each. Arnold Sachs, come on up. Juan Penguin. Marcos Velios.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Oh, it's still morning. How about that? You set a record. Thank you for the clarification, Counselman Rosendahl. My concerns really, normally when you have the issuance of these, of some sort of bonds, it's for one project. This is for improvements in infrastructure, equipment, acquisition, furnishing, and equipment of two headquarters, 2500 Southwestern Boulevard and 1999 West Adams Boulevard. Is there an equitable breakdown of the funds that would be used for both of these buildings? Is there an equitable breakdown on the cost of acquisition of the property? And what will be left over for the use, for the furnishing, equipment, and any other infrastructures that might be needed for both of these buildings? Because somehow or some way, call me a little bit jaded, but somehow along the line, neither one will be finished.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Juan Penguin. Juan Penguin, come on up. Then Marcos Velios. Come on up, sir. Yes.
He's definitely jaded. Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared for this one. I passed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Marcos Velios. And then Ben, I believe it's Basquer or Barker.
Good morning, Councilman Reyes, Honorable Councilmembers. Marcos Velios with Park of Velios on behalf of Community Impact Development, II LLC. Back in December, the Council approved the land use approvals for the construction of the new headquarters for the South Central Los Angeles Regional Center, which serves thousands of children and families in South Los Angeles. And we're very grateful for those approvals. This is going to be one of the most significant new construction projects in South LA in decades. We're here for the Tefra approval. The bonds will be issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority, and this does not add any indebtedness to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barker, or Basquer.
Ben Barker, CMFA. We're thankful for the opportunity to come here to the Tefra hearing and just to reiterate that this is a private transaction and that this is no indebtedness to the city, and this is a private deal between the party and the banks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one on the queue. Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, ma'am.
Item four called special for cards.
Okay, we have John Walsh and pass, and Juan Ping Pong Ball. The house dude, you passed?
No, I don't pass.
Well, come on up. We're calling you now.
Resolution resolving property of 750 Southwest Lake Case, blah, 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 from the rent escrow account, yeah. Okay, well, it's good that the city is charging the landlords, but we, nobody should have a landlord. We should all be landlords. Everybody should have a home. So you would have a lot of escrow accounts. You would have a lot of money in City Hall. Oh, no, because nobody's going to be paying rent. Sorry. You might not like my program. I don't like your programs. You don't have to like my program, but everybody needs a home. Everybody.
Thank you.
Without a landlord.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sachs.
Good morning, Arnold Sachs. The City Council seems to spend an inordinate amount of time discussing in its budgets the usage of personnel. You need personnel here to correct the REAP violations. You need personnel to cite the REAP violations. You did, back in January 29th, have a hearing about budgeting for positions throughout the agent departments in the City Council. I'm still, and I press this issue, waiting for a budget that shows the number of city agents, city personnel who inspect blighted, foreclosed properties. You've spent the time in council chambers to make an ordinance up, go after banks at $1,000 a day. As of yet, no pri- As of yet, no properties have been listed at any city council.
Thank you very much. Okay, see no one else on the queue? Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Item five, call special for cards.
Okay, we have John Walsh and Juan Dalhouse Dude. John Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See Mayor as Pope Roger the First in full papal regalia. I've lived on Hollywood Boulevard since 19, off Hollywood Boulevard since 1976, and also lived here originally in '66. Let me tell you about the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It is in terrible disrepair. Oh, a tourist broke their leg the other day on a star near Hollywood and Highlands. I have all that information. I know you're not interested in it. A woman was raped at 9:00 PM last Friday. It's in Crime Mapping LA, 6900 Hollywood Boulevard, 9:00 PM, and that was on the Michael Jackson star. There is a crime spree going on in Hollywood, and all the rapists know, if you come here, you'll get away with it, because any kind of publicity is bad for tourism. Rapists of the world, come to Hollywood Boulevard.
Thank you very much.
I just came from Hollywood. I was over there messing around, and all the security were acting like Hitlerian security, Gestapo. You know, move along, move along. We got the Oscars going on. So we put so much money into pomp and circumstance, just like the English lords used to do in Hollywood, and we don't even fix the darn street. I've seen Hollywood being broken up for five years, since I got to Hollywood. It is a shame that nothing gets done, and a lot of money gets donated by vodka companies. You know, Absolut Vodka has a star right there where the tourists come in. So we honor vodka over people. Are we ridiculous or what?
Okay, let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's move to public comment, general public comment. Let's have Denise Scott and Arnold Sachs, come on up. Denise Scott, are you here? Come on up. And Arnold Sachs, you'd like to get close to the microphone when we call you? Come on up. For general public comment.
This is not a sign. This is part of my speech. Okay, well, can we go to, can American citizens go to Mexico for housing, jobs, and medical? We have over 20 million illegals in this country, and our people are dying. Every time I come up here to a city council, you find in dogs homes. You know, well, go figure that. We humans are still waiting for homes. Anyhow, civil rights is a dirty business. I'm very dirty up here, Joe. I'm from Skid Row. I don't know who represents our district, but they need to send their paycheck back. I know Ms. Jan Perry happened to admit that she had failed at Skid Row. These are black people, 99.9 cent black people. So how dare her try to run for mayor? Sad, you talk about, we all continue to, you know, talk about sad stories about if Mexicans would have to be deported back to Mexico. I got some sad stories for you on black people. Native Americans, Native Americans. Anyway, but let me tell you another sad story.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Arnold Sachs, please come on up. Arnold Sachs, please come on up.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. This is City Council of LA on speed dialing. You know, on Wednesday, I was trying to discuss, the whole point here is to get the public to have an idea of where their money goes when claims are made. And part of the problem was some of the budget discussions that occurred here. One of them to privatize the zoo, and the other to privatize the convention center. And the difficulty with the zoo, it turned out, was there's a charter amendment that doesn't allow city personnel to work for outside companies. If that's the case, then why would you turn around and want to privatize the convention center? Do the same rules apply? Yes. So why the waste, fraud, and abuse to go ahead and go through the motions to bring forth that kind?
Thank you very much. John Walsh? Thank you. John Walsh, come on up.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, through Zion and Rosendahl. Please ask the city attorney. We have rules on public comment. Two minutes. That's always been the rule. They've never had a one-minute period.
Stay focused on the item.
And Mr. Zion, don't cross me, okay?
Mr. Walsh, stay focused on the agenda.
No, I'm asking the city attorney, who's looking at her lap, to rule on this. Two minutes. Those are always the rules. Oh, you don't have, Zion's going, I don't know nothing. I don't know nothing around here. HollywoodHighlands.org. I just want to point out that Viragosa is 100% against Jose Guardia. We are waiting for the days till we never have to see your face again, Jose. I'm telling you, Ms. Reyes, you're finished. We're supporting Sadio. Everybody's supporting Sadio. You are political garbage, and if you want to change the rules, I can change anybody but Zion.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Dr. Tom Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council and the resident, 30-year resident of El Sereno. Been there, seen that, don't want to see it again for anybody. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for coming to this meeting, even for one minute. It's worth it. Thank you. Now, real time, the Soto Street Bridge is going to be demolished at the junction of Soto Mission and Huntington Drive, but Public Works will not give our people time to see what is the hell is going to be done to us at that junction. There are no alternative routes, so 60,000, 80,000 cars will be coming through that construction site, but we can't get decent drawings of the staging of that project. Please ask Public Works to participate with neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Daniel Jones?
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jones. I think I'm about ready to get beat up. Is this a good morning for the second time, Sergeant? Did I see you this morning? I would like to know if anybody in the city thinks that these kids that were here earlier this morning grew up with guns in their hands, toy guns? I don't think so. I'd like to give credit to where credit is absolutely due, Los Angeles time, the culture of violence. See the circle? Toy guns are out of here. If we don't give them the idea to pick up a toy gun, they'll end up like the examples that you brought up before us this morning. That's gold to me. I come in here, I see gold every day. The president said I'm concerned when he signed a Defense Appropriations Bill for 2011. I was concerned as soon as he set the pen down, Mrs. Rosendahl, Mr. Rosendahl. That's code, right? Because my father told me, if the president signs a bill and he says, "I'm concerned" in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Henry Marine, our next speaker, Henry Marine. Come on up. After Henry Marine, we have Juan Dalhouse Dude. Go ahead, Juan, go ahead.
I've been called, I went back by a person that was brought from Africa, and the whites all came from Europe, and we keep calling us Mexicans names. We are Native Americans, you know, 50%. What is wrong with you people? Stop being racist, black and white. Stop being racist. We all deserve to have a home on earth, and we all deserve to stop fighting with each other. Okay, my black friends, my white friends? See, she ain't got no white friends. She got no Mexican friends. I do. Everybody is my friend, and everybody deserves to have a home. That's all I care about. If you want to be a hating human being, be that way, but you, even you deserve a home. Thank you. Let's do something real.
Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Prior to 2010, the sum paid to craftsmen in charter cities, as advised by the CEO, was presumed legal. Subsequent that, we discovered the prevailing wage rate got applied, prevailing trust laws got applied, and the management failed to serve this council, the people above them, the people below them. Consequently, the money sheltered from the pay of others and me, which is government property, until paid to the person it was sheltered for, is missing. And we know Rick Tuttle, Lord Chicken, Wendy Groo sent money to unions without a leg legally standing on, and sheltered 10% without a leg legally standing on.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes public comment. Let's move to the next item.
Item seven, call special for cards.
Item seven, we do have with us Juan Dalhouse Dude on item seven, if you're here, John Walsh, and Arnold Sachs. I'd like to come on up to the podium. Juan Dalhouse Dude, are you here? No, okay, he has left the chamber. John Walsh, okay, he is busy. Arnold Sachs, come on up.
I don't have my glasses. I don't have my glasses, so I can't really see. I do have my glasses, and I can't see. This is, um... Sorry, I'm unprepared. I wasn't, I thought they were going to continue this. Item number eight. Oh, this is Time Warner Cable. That's what this is, Time Warner Cable. Famous Time Warner Cable, the ones who cut public access to the city of LA. I remember Greg Smith sitting in the council chambers, saying there was going to be a lawsuit filed by the city to overturn that action. How'd that turn out? Ever hear of the lawsuit in a public access TV? Now you're only left with city council, public access, and you wonder why there's so many clowns sitting?
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, John Walsh. Come on up, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The reason they're saying that we can't speak for two minutes of public comment is you've got to go to a funeral. I just want to say, if I ever disappear, I want you to...
Sir, the focus is on the agenda item. Please stay focused on the agenda item. You are now disrupting the meeting. You have one morning.
And I'm telling you right now, Zion's wearing his Monica Lewinsky kneecap.
You are not on the agenda, sir. You're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. Okay, see no other item on the agenda? No other speaker? Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Twelve, eleven ayes.
Next item?
Item eight, call special for cards.
Okay, we have Arnold Sachs on number eight. Come on up. And Juan Dalhouse Dude.
Found what I wanted to talk about. Thank you very much. Again, situation arising. Never mind the amount of money, it's only $696, but why overtime? The city again, why overtime? You go into public, you go into private business, and the first thing that trickles down from the top to the management, cut overtime. Doesn't matter what you do, cut overtime. Doesn't matter how many people you got, cut overtime. You go into city business, overtime here, overtime there, overtime here, whether it's banked or spent, it's still overtime. I don't have a problem really with the police, because theirs is a fluid situation, but when you have other situations, when you have projects that have to be built and you include overtime, that's poor management.
Thank you very much. See no other speakers, cards, Juan Dalhouse Dude is not in the chamber. Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I guess we can move over to special meeting.
Mr. President, do you wish to recess the regular and begin the special meeting?
Yes, let's recess, regular meeting, and we will begin the special meeting. Madam Clerk, please clear the row.
Alarcon Buscino, Ingrid Garcetti, Wezar Caresska, Cori LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Wesley, Levimer, President Accorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Item 12 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, we do have some cards on this item. Arnold Sachs, please come on up, John Walsh, and I don't see Juan Dalhouse Dude in the chamber. We also have with us Dr. Tom Williams.
Yes, thank you. Good, no, good morning. Thank you very much, Arnold Sachs, again. What would really be important, more than anything here, is the definition more publicly directed for the powers that the joint powers authorities have and their ability to legislate and move different motions and actions that affect the local populations. It's not a commission. It's not a, it's not, it's not a committee. It's an authority, a joint power authority, with different aspects of different elected officials. What is the legal authority? Who is the legal authority for a joint powers commission? If you have three cities involved, whose legal authority takes precedent? How do you make the decisions then? Is that funded with outside money?
Thank you very much. Good day, Mr. Walsh.
Hello. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns water quality, improving water quality. Well, this is the only city in the world where we have dead Asian women soaking in towers, water tanks, at tourist hotels. That really hurt the water quality. They're not allowed to drink the water there, and I just want every tourist to realize, stay away from LA. It's full of guns, it's full of gangs, and it's full of dead women, Asian women, soaking for two weeks before they found out. Now, they don't want me saying this, and you've got Tom LaBange up here. This is dead, and I want to say that if I disappear, don't, the first place I want you to look for me is in the water tower on top of City Hall. You'll find me there.
Thank you very much. And there's no water tower on top of the building. Okay. Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, El Sereno. Water quality bonds, there's not enough money. Public Works tried this two years ago, but it never came to council. It's a tax, because we need to have our stormwater collected. It's not really water quality, it's going to be stormwater. And oh, by the way, the prop O funds were not enough, but they were only for capital expense, not operations and maintenance. Will these bonds be for new capital improvements, such as the Public Works target of $8 billion, with maybe $500 million a year just for operations and maintenance of those facilities? We don't have enough. Prohibit any operations and maintenance funding through these bonds. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Madam Clerk, next item? Fourth with, okay, Councilor LaBange, fourth with. Councilor Parks?
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes, ma'am. Let's do that. And Consul Parks?
On the regular agenda, number one, forthwith.
Okay, we're getting back to the regular agenda now. We'll go forthwith on item number one. Okay, so we are now at regular agenda.
Mr. President, council has motions for post and referral.
Post and refer?
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Consul Labange?
Mr. Reyes and all who were here just yesterday, we honored the one film that was made by Aaron Angelino's made, Argo, was shot 11 weeks out of a 13-week schedule here in Los Angeles. They used the Ontario Airport for the Tehran Airport, Mr. Rosendahl. They used the Canadian Embassy in Hancock Park for their work here. They used the Los Angeles Times, Be Aware, for the CIA building right across the street. 927 Angelinos worked on the job, from camera people to gaffers to caterers and everything. It was a very big plus, so we wanted to salute them. We gave them the Made in Hollywood Award for being the one of the 10, only made in Hollywood. That was Argo. Good luck on Sunday night, all those, for the Academy Awards.
Thank you, Consul Labange. Consul Perry announcement? Okay, Consul Zine announcement.
Mr. President, we have an event coming up, and let me get you the information. It is the Boys and Girls Club of West San Fernando Valley. It's the sixth annual Miles of Quarters. It's going to be at Westfield, Topanga, and Victory, and it raises money for the Boys and Girls Club, a wonderful opportunity. That's going to be from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Again, Westfield, Topanga, and Victory in the San Fernando Valley. Public's invited to attend. And we're going to have a groundbreaking celebration for the community center. This is going to happen at Van Owen in Owensmouth Saturday at 1:00 PM, groundbreaking for a new community center, senior center in my district. That's it for the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Consul Perry. Did you have a public announcement? I wasn't sure. Public announcement? Okay. Consul Buscano?
Thank you. It's going to be a great day in the harbor area tomorrow. First, those in Wilmington living on Cary Avenue at 9:15 will be trimming your trees, say that 10 times fast, trimming your trees, and I'll be out there to join street services. And the long-awaited skate park, groundbreaking with Wreckin' Parks tomorrow. Betsy, please join us at Peck Park tomorrow at 10:00 AM, along with our Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council members. And then we're going to have a huge barbecue celebration with a number of professional skaters, we have the half-pike out there, the mobile half-pike. It's going to be a great time, 10 all the way to 3. And Tom, come out and join us. We know you love your parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. College, just for the record, today we did have a one-minute public comment to accommodate the agenda, to make sure we were able to get through our agenda, given the quorum challenge we had today. So it was a discretion we do have, and I just want to make sure that was on the record. Okay, Consul Zine for...
And the board of supervisors in the future, because I believe they only go one minute. So for the future, for the future.
Thank you, Consul Labange. Okay, Consul Zine, adjournment motion?
Thank you. A adjournment motion for Leslie McCarthy Frankenheimer.
Everybody, please stand. Everybody, please stand. If you're in the audience, in the chamber, please stand for adjournment motion.
Leslie McCarthy Frankenheimer passed away January 22nd. Longtime Angelino, Leslie McCarthy Frankenheimer passed away January 22nd following a long battle with leukemia. She was a set director and four-time primetime Emmy Award winner for Carnival HBO, James Dean, TNT, Buddy Farro CBS, Max Headroom ABC. Before transitioning to television, she worked on films with such luminaries as Ridley Scott, Francis Ford Coppola, and John Landis. Attended UCLA, New York School of Interior Design, and the Art Center College of Design, majoring in space design. Also served as the peer group executive committee for art directors, set directors, the Set Directors Society of America, and as co-chair of the Community Outreach Committee. Also served on the executive board of IATSA Local 44, representing the set directors. Fifth-generation Angelino, mourned by her husband, John, who's an attorney and co-chair of Loben Loben LLC, their two adult children, Erin and Sean, their eight siblings, and many friends. Leslie McCarthy Frankenheimer survived, and she will be missed. Again, Leslie McCarthy Frankenheimer, may she rest in peace.
Thank you. Consul Perry?
I want to adjourn today in memory of Mr. George Arretani. Over the course of his life, Mr. Arretani donated millions of dollars to Japanese-American causes and with his wife endowed the nation's first academic chair at UCLA to study the World War II internment of Japanese-Americans and their efforts to gain redress. Interned himself during World War II, along with his extended family, he went on to become a self-made millionaire, successful businessman, entering the post-World War II international trade market as founder of Mikasa China and Kenwood Electronics Firms. A philanthropist and successful businessman, he along with his wife helped sustain Japanese-American cultural centers and museums, retirement homes, sports programs, religious institutions, and politicians, both Democrats and Republicans. During his life, it was estimated that he gave well over $10 million in charitable contributions, two among others, the Japanese-American National Museum, KEDRO Senior Health Care, and UCLA's Asian-American and East Asian Studies Program. He is survived by his wife of 68-years Sakai, his daughters Linda and Don Quij, seven grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. He will be sincerely missed by the community and by those who knew him best.
Thank you, Consul Perry. Consul Labange?
Members, I ask, we adjourn in memory of Elisa Lamb, the 21-year-old who was visiting Los Angeles from Vancouver, who tragically lost her life. Let's remember her today.
Thank you. Consul Perry, Consul Zine?
We have a second adjournment motion. Thank you, Mr. President. Estelle Goldstein passed away February 17th. Mother of a dear friend of mine, Randy Cohen, passed away at the age of 85, surrounded by family and friends. She was born in New York. After her husband passed away, she decided to move to California with her sister, and that was in 1996. She had two children, her daughter Randy, and her son Alan, who preceded her in death. Was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother, caring human being. At any given moment, she would fly, drive, or walk over where anyone needed help. She was known as a family caretaker. In 2007, she moved in with her daughter Randy, lived a plentiful life alongside by side with her daughter and her grandchildren. They called her Cami. Her daughter stated that she was the best cook in the world, and I can testify, have had many meals at their home, and she was a wonderful lady and a great cook. Her last years of her life were tough for her, but did not hold her back from putting everyone else ahead of herself. She will be missed dearly by her family and friends, survived by her daughter Randy Cohen and her grandsons Daniel and Adam. May she rest in peace, a wonderful lady, passed away 85 years of age.
Thank you, Consul. Seen no adjournment motions? This meeting is adjourned. Have a great weekend.